Who muted me?
Sorry, judge had two incidents which matched up with the civil or this criminal attorney civil side. We had some quarters helped us with some correspondence on some zoning issues. Correspondence on some homelessness vacancy issues and reviewed the docs and stuff and a conversation with in conjunction with the title company on the process for the new well site acquisition as well. Councilman, what's happening in your neck of the woods including the school?
We got state speech in common next weekend. I don't think Cody would complain if people wanted to column and say they want to judge because I
Are they still short?
I don't think so.
Mel, do you know?
I think he's flush, but you always over plan. Also, just, you know, town's going to be full. If all the events were full with all their coaches, we're probably looking at eight hundred people.
Hope we have better weather than the class. I can't call the classic because it wasn't two days. So it's a class one day.
It's the classic light.
What classic light?
Which went really well. Ten teams showed up. It was it was a fun little tournament. People that were there were happy. Honestly, the bus driver from Wolf Point said he had nice weather and driving until he hit Shelby.
Yeah, because it was warmer out there than it was here.
Yeah, and it was it was sunny and clear until he got into County and then it was and the wind started blowing. So pretty usual. Busy, busy couple of weeks at school the next couple of weeks.
That's a good thing, though.
Two volleyball games this week. Probably Thursday, possibly Saturday for sure. So come support our middle school volleyball players and then Friday we have basketball at home.
Playing tonight, too.
Yeah, they're playing right well. Started at five thirty, probably pretty, yeah. Yep, they played a half a JV match because Blair had some sick kids. So.
Councilwoman, what else can you bring from the south side?
Well, you know, the south side how we are.
I know, that's why I'm asking.
People are anxious for the the animal control conversation. So as soon as we schedule that.
That is scheduled for the thirty first.
Okay, at the pavilion?
At the pavilion, and I will be reaching out to you prior to that anyways, councilman, because I need your thoughts and guidance on some stuff here. I plan on, we've got some large notepads that we're going to put up. We'll have different stations there. I've got about forty individual notepads for people to take notes on. But the key to remember when we come to these things, and I'm going to invite people that have sent in their complaints to see if they'll come. But we got to have names on stuff. If you're going to give us suggestions, you're going to give us ideas. I want your name on it. Having something that's just written down doesn't hold a whole lot of cloud, I guess, for lack of a better term. So it's it's going to be the first of a couple. But let's get it out there and get it on the table and see what we can come up with, okay? I think I'll do lights the following week, streetlights. If I can get everything, if I can get my ducks in a row. Councilwoman Cunningham.
Is January still the dog license month or we dropped dog licensing?
Still dog and cat.
Dog and cat licensing.
But still is the the annual festival of licensing.
Festival, festival of licensing. I like that.
Yeah, I saw it. Yeah, okay, I just wanted to verify since we've swept the ordinances.
No, we haven't. They're they're still on the books. We just got to figure out how we're going to deal with that.
I understand.
Yeah.
I'm assuming we would continue to require the light.
Till further notice.
Yes, till further notice we will, yeah.
Okay, cool.
How's the dog park holding up in the weather?
Terrific. People are still being extremely kindly down there. We it's clean as a whistle. I mean, there are people I'm sure who leave things behind, but then the people who come next pick them up, you know, they they like their dog park.
And the library.
Oh, and the library. It's doing rather well. Marshall Hinch has been great and she just loves being back again. I know how much Charlie's in favor of, but Marshall's doing a great job.
I see that's been advertised.
It has been. There've been a couple of applicants. We'll see what happens.
Glad we could help out while we could.
Yes, we're glad you did. Thank you.
Keeper of the deer. And I call her that with great humor because every night I look across the street, not next to our houses and the number of deer out there just continues to grow. I'm supposed to go to Helena for a leagues of cities in town meeting on Thursday. We'll see what Mother Nature has to say about that. But if I go, Jody's going to go with me. She's going to, she's in that meeting anyway, so. Other than that, I'm going to be I've go to Bozeman on the twenty fourth for a meeting, but that's for my other, for my real job. We will keep things up to date. We've been bombarded, for lack of a better term, by a company, the same company that handles our online codes about wanting to back up our Facebook page. And I talked with Mel about it. I talked with our attorneys about it. I talked with the League of Cities and Towns about it, MMA about it. We don't stream our meetings to it. We don't post our agendas to it. It is mostly, if anything, an informational page.
Courtesy.
A courtesy page, and for us, this paid literally thousands of dollars to have it backed up on an annual basis to me seems silly. And I honestly expect them to get snitty with us, and if it does come down to that, we may have to shut that down or figure out what we want to do. I mean, I go back and look at some of the posts out there, and I haven't seen anything that would be classified as a meeting or anything like that that meets the requirements to be kept on file for a prolonged period of time. And everything's backed up to Meta's server. And you can search back as far as it'll go. So I don't know if they're just really trying to sell us something or if they're really serious, but I know some of the other communities out there. The larger ones are doing it because they're broadcasting it through their own. I know some communities have changed and gone to a YouTube channel. Have their own YouTube channels now. I don't know if that's something we want to do either. I mean, it's one more thing for people to have to try and find out there, but just something to think about there, you guys in the public that we may have to at some point in time look at cutting off that page and figuring out a way to do it differently so that the city of Shoto is not potentially going to have to pay to get all that stuff backed up, so. That one sitting doesn't sit well with me, and I'm doing some more research on it. I'll keep you guys up to date.
I guess my question on it would be, do we allow commenting? Like when we post an alert, do we allow commenting on?
Yeah, but we can't shut it off.
We can't shut commenting off?
No, we can put on there that we don't monitor the comments, but I can't shut it off. We try, we try. But with with the type of page it's registered at, it will not allow us to do that.
The reason I ask is I I manage a page and this morning there was a rather nasty anonymous member post on the page that Facebook actually shut us down for, shut down the page I managed. And I just I contacted all the other admins and I said, we're going to just we used to say it to shut the page down because Facebook gave us they gave us the option of removing the member, which I don't know how you do that when they're anonymous.
Yeah.
Or changing our roles and we just so. All that to say, if if comments like that happen, hopefully Facebook is more understanding than they were with the group that I was managing.
There's been some anonymous posts that have been hidden. I won't lie there. There's been posts that have had vulgar language in them that have been hidden. But again, it had nothing to do with the operational day to day functioning of this. It had to do with what grizzly bear comments were. That one was one that generated the most that day when we had the bear down by the Yeah, so we live, we learn, but I don't know. I would hope we could continue to do that, especially since we want to set up another one just for you know, more notifications for water and sewer and things like that, and leave this for more of an informational page. So we'll we'll try and pop that out and see what we come up with when I get done talking to those guys. We'll wrap up the deal on the end of the month to finish up the land purchase for the new well site. We had some of the owners had travel issues with the weather and health issues, so that didn't get done. We're still going strong here to two people. And for the time being, we're going to continue to go that way until Tom comes to me and says he's ready for help. Help me. I did see that he was spent a few minutes in here yesterday. I was down yesterday morning and did the sidewalks, but other than that, from the crowd, are you tonight chamber? Are you tonight county? Are you tonight? You didn't bring us burrito balls.
No.
So you're not Copper Creek tonight?
Give them a minute. I do have something, so we had a gentleman come into the county, he asked about the flood plain, and then he brought up some really good information to challenge the NRC two. And it seems to take effect, so our flood place probably going to take a little bit longer. It was regarding the hydrology.
I saw that email string.
So for us to calculate the twenty three thousand eight hundred fifty CFS that they're projecting for us, we would have to have, there's they need to explain where the source is going to come from. We would have to have a twelve inch rainfall per hour to get near that. And in my email to them was, you know, he said the Missoula River, the Missouri River, sorry, runs twenty three thousand CFS.
On average.
Which the Missouri River is ten times larger than the Teton. It is not realistic that the Teton would have that kind of flow. We seem to have sparked the NRC to take a huge step back at this point and what I've seen so far. We just received the email from DNRC. They were going to take a huge step back and they're like, we have got to review this hydrology. And it may affect our mapping in the benefit and actually because in the last forty years, we've not had anything over a thirteen thousand CFS event. So the question from this gentleman was is what historic data would make it believe that our our CFS blow per flood event would be fifty percent more than the projected one in nineteen sixty four that we adopted? So now that we've raised this issue, it seems to DNRC can take a step back. Couple of our meetings have been delayed two weeks. We were getting ready to apply for some grants to get some more technical
The DTX stuff.
Figure out the buy diversion, couple of areas along the river, bridges and all that. So that is now they're going to take a huge step back and I'm waiting for some engineer input. So, which is great. It may not be as dire as it seems to be at this current time.
Really appreciated that. So I just got that email this afternoon from Jerry.
Wasn't wasn't sixty four ten inches water for six hours?
Right for us, for for the calculation of twenty three thousand CFS.
Yeah.
The projected water, the rain would have to be twelve inches per hour.
Well, I'm saying that even sixty four was only like it was almost twelve inches per hour.
Yeah.
So basically, he uses calculations up. His name's Joe and I can't remember his last name, but he came in and he was it was me and Joe Dale over sitting in the office and it was all valid points. I wrote up an email to DNRC. This was brought up by, you know, you know, a citizen and asked these questions. We believe these are valid. We really need to see the data and why why we are now getting a fifty percent increase. Three hundred and fifty six homes are affected by the flood plain, one hundred and fourteen floodway. Trust me, twenty hours a week, it's just it's so DNRC has taken that email and said, okay, well, we're going to review the whole hydrology report and read back into it and find out why this is showing twenty three thousand eight hundred fifty.
I was glad to see that, you guys. Mel, you got anything for the good of the order?
Tomorrow night. A week out from tomorrow night, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Because of the concerns about love. We're going to need to go to that.
Anything from the arts? High social this weekend?
Lois Steinway and Isaac Callender and friends performing and wrap comings from those who have called.
And they got the pavilion thawed today. Pavilion was on the frozen list, but it's got thawed out today. Somehow the cover got the
Cover fell off and it was kind of exposed to the we got that fixed. Get around and it's it's back up.
With that, I have nothing else.
Oh, I have two more.
Oh, yes.